Good game.
What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. And today we're gonna be looking at I C M ranges. When you're on the bubble.
P K O adjusted.
P K O adjusted. I C M.
Asymmetrical.
Yeah. So I was like.
Did you, did you click fold?
Did not. It's giving it's pressuring us. Start from here. Seems to be a call.
Wide range thirty five effective. I mean.
So maybe we're tighter, but.
No, you're not. I don't think you fold really any.
I think you folds with the card. No?
I don't, I don't think you did.
Not against button.
Certainly not.
You don't even full for five two off.
I think it's just cuz you're you're a little deeper is the only reason.
I didn't, I just got here.
Why you put this?
Well, I mean, given this situation, you know, reverse button or thirty sixty.
Right?
You're happy.
Yeah, you're gonna call here for sure.
What was that one, Louis? Those shallow versus U T G?
When we were covered.
These are asymmetrical near bubble P K O ranges. So like you see, you see the the bounties are no longer standard. And um, yeah. It's adjusted for bubble.
Alright, that that makes things interesting, yeah.
We're super governed here. So easy call.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with Tim. Hands too strong. Into a guy with eight, like almost eighty big blind. I mean, we only have a mid bounty, but you are uh.
You're asking. Uh, you're gonna shove like more like Chippy V stuff here cuz he's calling this up on something close to Chippy V.
He's got too many chips, man. He's got too many chips.
I think the solver was gonna show.
Yeah, this was, this was forty four verse fifteen.
Even like even strange kind of.
Yeah, this is, this is a different scenario. You should be very behaved here.
Because it's bubble and we're covered, we can't just.
Yeah, I mean, look, this is cut and dry. There's no bluff here, really. It's like you have a blocker or a pair or like a strong king. That's it.
Do you have an ace?
Yeah, that's it. There's no polarity to this whatsoever. It's completely straightforward and honest.
Not even defending all the suited stuff.
That infamous ten six is still in there, though. Alright, forty five verse a guy covering. You're deep, you're gonna continue still pretty wide here.
Hey, do you fold to the stuff now?
Uh, no.
Gems at this that, no?
Uh, no.
What do you three back with?
You're covered, so I would highly, I'd be highly suspicious. That you're gonna be too crazy here. Like, it's gonna be, you might have some polar asex here, but I don't think you're gonna be too out of line.
You have that queen three off suit in you.
I don't think so.
Maybe not, just offsuit aces.
I kinda agree with Danny. I think.
I think you'll have a little triangle of folding suited as well.
No folding suited. It's too deep. It's like forty five effective. But uh, we are seeing some jack eight off, some ten eight off, some of this trash. Hopping in there.
Isn't it too straightforward strategy to only razor begin?
What do you mean, king six off, king five off?
Yeah, but it's mostly more called than the.
Jack seven?
Yes, it it honestly, it's kind of a unique situation, though, like you you play a very short period of the tournament near the bubble. So I don't know how wildly balancing some of these ranges are gonna be. I feel like they're gonna be pretty uh, cut and dry.
But it's near the bubble exactly, like twenty, like thirty or?
I think these are adjusted for seventeen point five percent of the field left. Louis, quick, you wanna click the information tab just to? Kind of verify that. The it's up near bubble. I think it's that eye circle.
The eye.
You see where it says near bubble? Top left under controls.
Top left, controls, near bubble, eye.
So if you click that, it may give you more information. I don't know if you can, though. Okay, you'd have to pull up the actual panel. It may be here. Under the cog. Um, near bubble is seventeen and a half percent of the field left, I'm fairly certain.
Okay. Yeah, it's less than twenty five, so it's between the bubble and twenty five, so.
Yeah, so somewhere between twelve.
Five away from the money.
Is usually ten percent, right?
Yeah, I think it's it's twelve, twelve to fifteen. Yeah, twelve.
Depends on the, yeah.
So we're close.
Okay. You're covered. I don't think there's really an option other than just calling here.
You should call.
Yeah.
Squeezing, but the two twelve, I think that's just.
You're gonna bubble.
That's what, that's what you're gonna do, Louis, is you're gonna bubble.
Then you're gonna fall bad, you have to fall.
What the twelve, twelve seems to be.
So I was digging through these uh, not too long ago when I was doing some of my database work and I found something interesting, Louis. So like squeezing from the big blind. In I C M rich environment, the squeeze size scales up with effective chip stack. So. Like if you made it like seventy effective, you're gonna be squeezing like fifteen or something. And then if as it goes down, you're gonna be squeezing like a more normal size. I asked some people smarter than me about it and they uh, they didn't really have too much to say about it. So I don't know why it does that.
It's cuz you're super polar, right?
I guess that's it, man. I guess you just wanna be more and more and more and more polar.
Pocket queen is quite resilient here.
Yeah, but. I believe it's because it's a U T G raise that you don't squeeze very much.
I mean, honestly, you can make it that cutoff who's got a hundred and you wouldn't be squeezing into that.
Yeah, let's look how it changes.
Like, it's basically the same range, except now you're just jamming some stuff, like it. It's really not that much different.
Yeah, little wider.
Yeah, I mean, it yeah, there's a little more king four off, I guess, some queen five off, but.
We were what, forty forty two uh, B B if I remember? Okay, that's why to wear too much a deep stack uh, to uh, to make a big move. On the bubble.
Too deep to I C M, too early position. All the factors going against us.
I think you just call.
Call seems good.
Do you, what do you raise? Do you raise? I think you gotta have an ace. You gotta have an ace, right? It's gonna be a polar aces. And like the top of your range.
Ace four off.
Yeah.
I don't know, I wanna say like king three off, like king five, king six, king seven?
Yeah, maybe king six, ace five off, some real junky stuff.
Maybe.
We build a jack seven off?
You can look at it. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure how crazy we're gonna get here.
Is this a good old jack seven now?
So, yeah. You are pulling from the floor of the offsuit. And then you have some of those crazy tens.
Yeah.
Technically, we're covered, but we can still do a ton of damage to him, so we can kinda get after it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's it, right? Like he is at risk by putting us at risk. There's no like. Delta there. You're effectively the same stack.
Ten three suited.
Yeah, go to your database and see who's got that range balanced. Man, so like Chippy V, you could probably start playing around with combos like this, but uh. It might, man. It might raise. I I'm not finding raises here. I'm just gonna be calling.
Well, I think it's a, you have to have some raise in your range.
It's the king seven, man. I'm never gonna miss it. Oh, my.
Scared. I call.
Oh, my god, what is this?
Maybe the fact that you're out of position.
Yeah.
This is a scam.
They had king seven.
They conditioned me to have king seven and now it's king six.
That's a scam.
You jam king six in there and you get called. How many tags do you think you get from the table?
Imagine you do that and then survivor sees it.
Yeah, you're never getting staked again in your entire life.
Where G I will raise this?
Uh, I think we can raise this. We cover.
Did you guys see this one up in the I C M channel? Um. Um, nearly stone bubble. I'm twenty five. I shove button with king six suited onto small blind with thirteen big blinds, big one with eight. And get called by queens.
I had that time to go through recently.
Hit the king.
And everyone, every like, not everyone, like three people at the table, what is he doing? And then the guy next to me who's like quite good is like seem standard, like. Like they're folding ninety five percent of range, like what are you gonna do?
So, yeah, that region definitely does have some raising.
Okay. Little bit of raising in my life.
Throwback.
Uh, behave yourself.
I can't.
You have to call.
Sorry, I'm sorry. This is suited king, it's suited ten.
It is going to cost him nothing to ruin your tournament for the day.
We're gonna, we're gonna take three big lines from him.
He's gonna, he's gonna look down and say, eh, pocket threes, I call.
Listen, listen, I I didn't put kingdom suited in our hand, right? That's the dealer's fault. Here we are, right? What are we gonna do?
Push the button, see what that's.
You're gonna call.
Oh, my goodness.
Gigi.
Oh, my goodness. What does he have?
He's folding, it's okay.
There's no way. Actually, it's the bubble and he covers us, so maybe. Alright, let's see brief flop. What are we supposed to do?
That's a bubble punt.
Where's the?
This study, this study hat, you see the study hat? There's a video and a study hat above the N L.
It's better. Okay, so the study hat says.
Nah, yeah, big blind range. You want an ace. You basically want an ace. An ace or a pair, unless unless it's king six off for some reason.
Yeah. King six, yay, okay, so olive line for this one. It's tough. I thought it was a good spot. So we covered this guy, so we just shove in his face?
I think you might just call because it's under the gun.
It's just a call game, right?
Yeah. Unless you have like a mountain of chips, right?
The game of calls.
This one you might pile in his face.
Definitely. No.
You raise in his face.
Seems like we're too strong?
You just don't jam, look at that. Just don't jam.
Look at this weird range, like this here and then this, okay, this portion seems to be residual, like it's always playing.
You just don't jam.
Yeah.
But we did, and we talked about. Maybe, maybe raise because, yeah, maybe.
Yeah, but I think it's kind of a bad hand to raise with, like, do something more like. Junkier.
We we. Like ten, seven.
I would just be too, uh, in game I do raise this, but I think like a balanced range might not.
This is, this is too good.
The E V is like right there, but yeah, it's gonna pick stuff that's just a little junkier or a little better, you know, like so that's more clearly value or bluff, yeah.
Yeah, these like offsuit nines for some reason are really unpopular.
You just have worse hands of range. You're starting off with one hundred percent of hands, like you have eight deuce off, you have jack three off.
It's like not good enough to be on the value side with like the jack ten off, queen ten off of the world, but like, too good. To be down there in the dirt with uh, ten six off.
I agree. I call it the pyramid at the bottom. Trash, trash.
I think you just call. Just call.
Hmm, do you have a three bet range?
Alright, so like there's a couple of factors working against us. E P one. Covers by, uh, covers by well over two X two. Bubble three, like.
Is more than the minimum, so it's.
If you are gonna raise, I would much rather this be the junkie like ace four off over the.
Is this a spot for like an ace four off?
Maybe, yeah.
Then we're gonna be pretty respectful and pretty nutted when we raise here, like we're gonna.
Should, yeah, you should, Tim.
Ace four off.
But really just not a blood of buffs cuz we're just expecting to get called a lot, so we just wanna like hit this flop with kings.
It raises twelve.
It's the same thing I was saying. Yeah, it's the same thing I was telling. I think I told you about that before, Danny. It's weird.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was like a, at an F T kinda equa stack scenario, I think. But it makes sense here. I'm definitely not going big enough.
It's the, you wanna play for my bounty? Fine, you can play against my pocket kings.
I think that's, I think that's it. Like, you don't wanna have, you just want your polar components to be more polar. So it's like you, you need to raise a little bit bigger to generate more folds. I'm just calling here.
Alright, gotta squeeze, it's the button.
I.
We're like a medium to bigger stack against a bigger stack, yikes.
I kinda like where, I mean, honestly, like this is a pretty strong hand for both of these ranges, but.
Too late position, we gotta squeeze.
Ooh, actually, I don't, honestly, Danny, I like that better than non all-in raising, but I still think we just call. What do you do versus a four bit jam?
I would mix call and all in here.
There you go. There you go, Danny. There you go.
Yeah.
You fold versus a jam, but you save the, you save a fortune, no?
Tens you pure jam, right?
I feel like tens would be pure. I think it like kinda crescendo's around tens and jacks.
Feels so bad.
Well, that king six off.
Squeeze size ten and a half.
I feel like we're looking at like forbidden content with this king six off business. Someone's gonna do this in game and say like.
Yeah.
Little poker coaching told me I should do this.
Just just repeating the.
We're off to there, we're gonna check.
Raise.
I like raising.
I'm checking, we're in the big line, we don't need to raise this portion.
We prefer to raise a six, seven, eight, right?
I think we prefer to.
Like. Offsuit sometimes he just folds.
This area is what we wanna raise. Not, this is enough, no? All this portion here is like, strong enough?
Yeah, let's not go colorblind. It's definitely a reasonable part of the strategy.
Halloween, I'm sorry.
It's fall, man.
Balance without an R and G, it's hard to balance.
Is you suited? So this is where we saw, right?
You just call this, man.
Ace do soft, you give it a shot?
Maybe, may, maybe, yeah.
Ace do soft or fold.
You think folds?
Five, a seven, you can do it.
Ooh, ace four, ace five. But yeah, it is.
Cause it's U T G, it's like.
Not even defending all the suited stuff.
That makes sense. I mean, bubble. I'm probably losing a couple more hands on the bubble versus a bigger stack, like just don't wanna play like whatever nine, three suited or something.
Eleven big blinds, what are you gonna do? There's no good, there's no good answer here, Louis.
Oh, the ten or against early position, snaring the bubble? I'm calling.
I think four, I think four is the best option here.
Savage, wow.
You're crazy. It's just a call. Look at this. You have a ten or against early position.
Let's see what, let's see what this four.
A seven, what do you do with they said?
Just has pocket kings, he literally has pocketed kings here, like.
Yeah, we're smoked.
Seven goes four?
I don't know, I'm guessing cuz the ten is really bad, but the seven here is not as bad.
I'm full, I'm full.
You got micro frequencies of all of it.
One percent, boy?
This is like saying, don't do this very often.
Don't do it.
One in a hundred times.
But if you did it, then you're looking for.
Aces wanna do it, so you gotta do it sometime.
Yeah. Ace, jack is jamming, I'm, okay.
Imagine getting min clicked with king queen there. How in the box are, how in the box are you?
I'm snapping it off.
Feels bad, but people aren't folding, I don't think there.
Geez, so this is an easy razor call. How is the race so big, geez?
I I can explain it again if you want, Louis. I think we've talked about it twice so far.
I know, but it doesn't stick to me. It's scaring me. Am I really gonna have to do that?
Really good stuff and then some stuff that is a blocker.
Yeah, good blockers and good hands and less frequently.
The size, I'm talking about the size.
Exactly, exactly. Did you notice that it goes even smaller, though, when you're short stacked? Like, you don't really typically have a min click range.
See, it's so much like you can't do it. Do you think it's just because, you know? They didn't add it? Didn't add anything.
Oh, Louis, it's not a mistake, man.
Don't, don't you wanna play post flop maybe? You want. You want to play pre flop and not not post flop? Or I start nothing to do with it?
Nah.
I think you just benefit more from generating folds. You don't really want.
Yeah, that's what I meant, so you don't want to play post flop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is this ridiculous play from small bind, ugh?
You just call.
Yeah, just call.
Offsuit four, you you jam?
Hey, how about the men click raise? What's this men click raise look like? What, 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 what's in our range doing that?
It's quite a bit, I think. It's some suited weirdness.
Jack four, jack four off. Seven, three suited.
The small blind, Louis.
Yeah.
I love some decent bears.
Uh, honestly, the the men raise thing I think is pretty standard. It's just what their standard raise strategy is gonna be from the small blind. I I'm not really that surprised about that. I'm more surprised about this uh, four big blank click back range. You could look at it, though.
It's there.
That's not the raising range from the small blind. I think it's what Danny was saying. Like, what's the small blind raising to two?
Oh, it's less than I thought. Cuz they cover. I guess they're all in a ton.
Just uh, make sure you got eight deuce suited in the men click range.
Listen, I'll jam on you with nine, three suited, but eight deuce suited, you know, not quite there. I'm just gonna men raise you, see, see what you got, feel you out a little bit.
I like it. Call.
And we don't bluff, basically.
How big's your size gonna be, Louis?
Twelve, it's twelve here.
Want to say last, but.
Why is it twelve now? And it was ten before with forty?
Small blind raise, small because the stacks are small. Yeah, Joe, so it's like, it's I C M adjusted, so. The site, people benefit less from trying to defend it like M D F. For pot odds and things because the math kinda breaks down, so you can start using like. Some of these sizes where they should be defending everything because you will get folds.
Yeah.
Louis, it's cuz he's both earlier position and he has more chips, like we're not equal stack, so he can afford.
You see fifty average? Yeah, so like fifty average, if you go to like sixty average or seventy average, you'll see like fourteen or sixteen.
We're pushing the buttons, here we go.
It's still the same.
The nature of this strategy is that our, because of I C M, our. Our three betting range kinda gets pushed into the calling range or into the folding range. And so we become hyper polar here, so as you become more and more polar, you get to up your sizing. With your best value and your biggest buffs.
The maximum is fifty one.
That's just because of the uh, P K O. You'd have to take it off P K O, but it's, it's not worth it. But yeah, I uh, I agree with what you're saying there, Peter. It's, it's pretty interesting. Like, it caught me off guard when I saw it.
Oh, what do we call with her? That's gonna be a good one.
We cover for a booty, let's go.
What? Peter.
I don't think you call here on the bubble which act ten off.
Peter, you wanna call?
Yeah.
What's the worst hand? Yeah, alright, so Peter wants to call jack ten off. I think that's way too wide. I think like. King, jack might be a, king, jack off might be a, a little closer, but I still think that's probably folding for sixteen.
Bounty power is not very high.
Um, what are you doing? Suit of tens? Are you calling suited tens?
Yeah.
Probably, right?
Yeah.
Are you folding any aces?
Uh, no.
What about like ace three off?
Following, snapping it off.
Yeah, maybe so.
Breaking my wrist. Ace three, think about it.
Pairs, any pairs folding?
No, no, no.
Okay, let's see. Peter says call here, I say fold.
What about offsuit kings? Wait, wait, wait. Offsuit king.
I said king jack was interesting. I think so, man, on the money bubble.
Thinking ten is a go.
Maybe.
I wish that I have seven bigs if we lose, but.
What about queen jack?
Offsuit or fold?
Hmm, queen jack I'd fold. Call.
I don't know what I think.
So how, how, how wide do you think this small blind's jamming?
No, very wide.
You think this dude's super wide?
Maybe not, we cover him, he's on the bubble. Very blocker oriented, right?
No bounties, no main cash.
So I think this guy's got like most pairs, basically all asex. Probably like suited Broadway stuff. Um, maybe some suited connectors. He's jamming sometimes, like you think it's got seven, eight suited in here? Eight, nine suited?
Uh, no.
Yeah. This is a fold. Yeah, so king jack is pretty interesting. It's indifferent. Queen jack is folding. Look at the, okay, I thought I was calling like ace four. And uh, I didn't, I didn't know what I was gonna do with the pairs, to be honest.
Okay, suit the tens.
Suit of tens are good. Yeah, we got those.
But were these aces?
Yeah.
Honestly, I feel pretty good about that range.
I mean, I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I'm actually calling it king jack off or whatever, it's fine.
Could you look which uh, which range she's jamming?
Yeah, 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 please, please, look at the jam range.
Think it's a probably like.
So it is very blocker oriented and small pair, and then there's some like suited connectivity stuff. I said seven, eight, six, seven, but it's actually a little bit better.
That's reasonable, though.
This is not crazy, I think. I think this is like. Probably even a little more conservative than some people actually are in game.
Yeah, right. Some people are like, you can't call king seven off, Yolo.
Some people are like, you can't call King seven off YOLO.
Yeah, he's jamming Jack ten. I thought he would be jamming a little bit more worse stuff than Jack ten. And he has like ten, nine, Jack, nine, Queen, nine, but I thought he would also been there with the eights.
The ten is actually particularly bad. Yeah, the like the tens are actually like a pretty big block of his jams.
Oh, goodness.
Uh, this is kind of not a fun one.
I call here.
What do I do? I think honestly, this might be strong enough to raise. But if you raise, you gotta, you gotta call off. I don't think you go all in. First, under the gun one.
I would just call. Is it wrong?
I think calling's probably smart in game, to be honest.
Say no, don't call here. I know it.
We do have a big booty. That's the other problem. Alright, so we are covered. Like if we had if we covered by one big blind, I would say we could play more aggressively, but I think we're gonna be pretty respectful here. Like I think you are gonna. No, not verse under the gun one. I'd be shocked, to be honest, if you're covered and it's first an EP opener that covers. And our bounty powers. Look, we got a hundred and seventy five bucks in our head, though. Like, this is not an insignificant bounty.
Yeah, and ten, my ten, Jack and nine, ten probably.
I feel like.
I don't know. It's like a a good chance to get a big sack on the bubble.
There's a, there's a couple competing things there, right? Like I think the overarching one is like you kind of want to make the money. But I don't know.
Yeah, this hand is just too strong. It's it's gonna win.
Rip? You guys are crazy. I don't think there's gonna be a rip.
But I felt feels crazy here.
It's not crazy. This hand is just too strong.
He's, you're gonna have seventy percent all in on the bubble a ton, and if you win it, then you just get to run the table for like four orbits. You just scoop all their bounties one by one.
You're gonna get annihilated by pocket eights.
But I think people call pairs more than this.
Maybe they might.
Yeah, and they call suited Broadway more too.
They might.
Good. That's good for us. Enjoy getting counterfeit.
Yeah, frisky jam. I do not recommend that.
Me and Peter are here to ship.
I would like to raise.
You wanna raise? We're suited. We don't need to. We're deep. We're suited. We we value be respectful here.
You cover, though.
We cover, but it's big second against big stack. Look at all the shorties here.
Uh, look at his two hundred and seventy five dollar bounty. Like we're kind of assuming the minimum bounty here is fifty.
Yeah.
Like this guy is like a double min cash just to stack him. Let's go.
Do you want to do what? You want to check and hit?
I would raise. I I.
And then what if you raise back? You lose this spot, no?
Probably, but he he shouldn't have a huge raise back range when he's covered this deep.
Twenty-six percent is good.
I think it's gonna be one of the higher frequency raises, you know?
It's one of the lower frequency raises. You're actually very you're very polar here and you're very aggressive here.
Yeah, we keep having this where we have these ones that are decent but not amazing, and we need to be raising trash, like trash, trash.
Seven deuce is a great raise here.
There's a nine big wide stack like it's just a pressure cooker spot.
Hey, uh, before you go, will you look at what his raise back range is? Like how aggressive is he playing back when we raise him? It's basically not much, like there's not much here, just like basically value and like a couple of random asex bluffs.
Yeah, like fifty percent of the time he just folds here.
At this point, we AP US three forward, uh, if you raise him.
Yeah, he should, right? I don't hate that. Do you rip, though? I was thinking do, I was thinking not all in. Like what do we have that's not all inning? He's too shallow, right?
Yes, twelve.
Yeah, the jam range needs to be pretty value oriented and the um, look at that scam. The other one needs to be more uh polar.
Mega polar, yeah.
This is too strong to jam, not all in, maybe, or maybe.
What's the worst pair you use? You jam like this?
I think jamming is gonna converge around nines and tens.
Oh, I I mean, seven point five.
Uh, Jack's mixing tents. With maybe some worse.
What do you do with sevens and sixes?
Yeah, man, they're gonna be like mixing. I think you might see fragments of jamming, fragments of raising and calling.
It's like threes, deuces, fours, jam, and five, sixes like to call for some reason.
Having a lot of small pairs?
Yeah, so ten, it's actually ten, so a pip down from what I was saying. But yeah, like honestly, these low pairs, it looks like you can go either way. If you got fours it men raising is pro or like not all in raising is probably close to calling, which is gonna be close to jamming. Same with fives. Oh, man, you gotta just call. What's the worst thing you call, though? What are you folding here?
What do you do with ace ten suited?
Just hear bluff region.
Dude, you gotta let go of ace ten suited. You don't beat.
Ace ten suited, you're folding.
Yeah, dude, I'm definitely folding. I'm folding on the button. Ace ten suited here.
Three bet ace ten suited?
Probably not.
Yeah, we just have a value region and a bluff region. We fold the bluff.
Yeah, like it's gonna be once in a blue moon, pocket threes and aces deuce. Other than that, you're gonna be uh.
You're gonna smash your head in the wall.
Yeah, you're gonna have a hard time here, right? Typically.
Well, queens, you know, it's queen. So ace ten suited, we're, what do we do? Geez.
I think you gotta let go of ace ten suited, but Danny made a good point. I don't think you're raising ace ten suited, so it shouldn't be really in range.
Okay, so it's more like ace Jack.
What do you do with ace Jack suited? That's a good question. Or ace ten off. What do you do with those? Ace ten offs, I think, easy fold.
Yeah, easy fold.
Jack, easy fold.
So let's take a look. So make the button jam.
Is gonna call it off.
I think that's why we jam here with ace queen and ace jack, because we don't want to be in the opposite seat where.
You're right. Yeah. I think Ace Jack's folding, man. I'm not, I'm I'm never calling Ace Jack in game here.
I'm with you on that. I'm never calling Ace Jack.
I think we're calling.
I think there were the solvers gonna call the the ace jack and he's gonna call the tens and do this.
And the and the King Queen suited is gonna call two, right?
Dude, I would not call King Queen.
Okay.
We are covered and it's still the bubble.
But I ain't, I ain't gonna call down with five zero, okay?
The value region. We we have a shitload of bluffs.
I don't have all that.
Yeah, we need to have it more. We we just need to bluff more here.
If we're in video game land, I'm 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 perfectly fine with talking all this crazy stuff, but I mean, once you get out there in the real world and start calling off those hands.
You good luck, man. You're gonna get hurt. They just always gonna show you ace king. They're gonna look at you like, are you stupid?
Nah, they have fours.
No, man. Not on the bubble. Nope, not a suited ten here.
Dude, you only have eleven big blinds. Why would you jam this?
Uh, it's Jack ten suited, no?
Yeah, we don't have full deck, I think. Maybe, maybe you do.
If that was a suited, all the suited broadways, we just go, no?
You look at twenty, if we have twenty, maybe then.
These are different ranges. It's asymmetrical. You can't just click through them. Alright, you're deep. You have this weird region. Feel like this hand is too good to be a raise.
I would just call.
So you probably, you probably just call. It does raise some. I thought I would be choosing like the worst ones, but maybe this is one of the worst ones.
So what do you raise with?
So it's like the offsuit floor is kind of what we've been seeing. It kind of like.
Well, this is different.
I think it still pulls from this side, though, doesn't it?
I don't think so. I don't think it's that junk here.
No, no, we're talking two different things. You're not, you're not taking seven deuce and raising into a raise. But you're taking, no, the floor. It's exactly what I was just saying. You're taking the floor of your your offsuit range. So like the worst, the worst of whatever offsuit cards you have here make pretty good raises.
The ones you don't quite want to call.
Yeah.
Yeah, the connectors want to call, the gappers want to raise.
Yeah, so the closer the cards get together, the more they want to call.
Surprise we don't defend every suited card.
We've seen that before here.
Hmm, in position against a small blind?
I'm not gonna lie, I'd probably make mistakes. I'd probably make mistakes with some of those suited trash cards.
Yeah, you don't have some raises from them.
It's nice to see. Want to try another position than a big blind?
Yeah, whatever you guys want to do. I like this work. This is, I like new stuff, so this is interesting to me.
We raised ten here. Wait, let's do this.
I think you would raise ten here, Danny, but the world may never know.
Alright, I like it.
I think it's a I think, yeah, that's my answer. I will raise, but this is.
You want to raise here?
No, dude, you're covered behind. What are you crazy doing? It's under the gun.
You want powerful.
I want to call.
I want to call. Call and get squeezed.
Dicky, I knew like Alan loved this hand, like.
I do, man. I do.
It's not far off from something that we can call.
What's the rest of the range look like? Like if I say, I'm I'm calling with five, six, seven, eight, it's like that.
Five six is good, but ten nine, look at ten nine.
So, alright, once again, it's ICM, so having an eight, nine, ten, all that stuff's bad.
Ace Jack, I would give it a little call here. No?
What's the bigger mistake?
And we have to play three way against a guy who covers both of us with a wide range and an offsuit combo.
Compare the EV of five, six to Ace Jack. Fun little experiment for you.
We're only really calling stuff that plays super well multiway.
I think I think there's a blocking effect also that's going here. So like you want to call connectors that are outside of the opening range of EP. So they should be opening some eights, nines, maybe even like a couple sevens. And they just don't really have that with the the fives and the sixes as much. Cause what what are they opening? They're opening a seven suited. They're opening they're not opening King seven from under the gun one.
King eight.
Should be King eight. Strategy EV, so you'd have to hover it because it says zero, so five, six. Is zero, oh, it's just gonna say zero, I guess.
Yeah, it's not happy. So, kind of tight there.
I think that's also a function of the big blind covering behind.
I've been making mistakes, I think. Like, look how you fold Ace Jack, but you continue with King Queen.
Kind of.
Weird stuff. So here.
I'm folding here.
You don't three bet?
Bro, you're covered in two spots, fifty effective on the money bubble.
What are you three bet with?
That's a better question. I think you gotta be polar, kind of like what we've been talking about. You you want to pull like those maybe trashy asex sometimes? Maybe, uh, you maybe.
What's the worst hand you call here?
I don't.
Without three betting, you can, yeah, because you still have a lot of playability.
Like, do you call Queen Jack here?
No. I I'm I'm folding King Jack off here, probably.
You gotta have a calling range, right?
You do, you do. Honestly, this deep, I think the middling suited stuff's gonna perform pretty well. So like, I don't know, the Jack eight, Jack nines of the world, maybe the King sevens, King eights of the world.
I don't think we have any Jack eight here.
No, maybe not.
Ace eight suited, ace nine suited.
Yeah, that stuff, that stuff's gonna play really well, Danny. And I think your raises are gonna come from polar combos, so like.
So I think we need like a an ICM blocker to the King, to the ace.
Yeah, if you're gonna bluff.
The the general is just very linear by nature.
So, wait, is this this, okay, I'm way too, I'm screwing this up. Look at these offsuit tens.
Look at Queen ten off.
Yeah, I thought maybe we could call here.
Look at it.
Just out of curiosity, real quick, will you compare this to a a chippy V range?
Fairly similar.
I feel like this is even a little wider than a forty chippy V range.
This is fifty.
We're pretty deep, so.
Well, look at forty and fifty. I mean, honestly, you're between the two. Eight max chippy V. Fifty, alright, so you gotta look at button. I think honestly, I think the ranges are just so wide. It is very similar. Look at forty real quick, just.
The EV is way lower, though.
The EV is way lower. Just to humor me.
Uh, no, the way the EVs are measured is different. The chippy V one is um measured in big blinds and the ICM is measured in percentage of pot, I believe. Yeah, or percentages of the price pool even.
Okay, and then what do you want to see? Sixty?
Just drop it down to forty. Okay.
The all-ins and everything.
Yeah, I just wanted to see how these ranges were differing between these two. To be honestly, honest, they're very similar. I guy, you're not really tightening up much range wise here.
Suited sevens, suited queens.
Yeah, you are kind of tightening up on that side. I the, this is weird because like usually the suited side is way more resilient than the offsuit side, but these ranges, the offsuit side seems to be the resilient portion, like that seems odd to me. Okay, well, yeah, three bet it. Go ahead, have a blast.
Run away. Folded, it was a three bet bluff, so you fold.
Yeah, easy play. It was a three bet bluffs.
I grabbed that A big line. Who said it was a good three bet?
Uh, I think Danny had thought about it.
No, I wanted a call.
He wanted a call. I don't hate raising here, but honestly, blind versus blind, I do a lot of calling from the small blind at forty.
Yeah, let's slip in. What do you raise with?
This raises, so it's gonna pull from these offsuit trashy aces.
Yes, okay, we're raising from this part of the day. Oh, look at this.
Yeah, but you're raising. You're raising a a pip above um what Tim described as the uh, what was it? The mound of poo?
Pyramid.
Pyramid of poo.
But this dirty here.
And then that's the boomerang, right? So you got some boomerang.
This is the boomerang, though. It looks like a cactus to me.
Kind of looks like a fish. Kinda looks like a fish, if you ask me. The tails, the four deuce, the five deuce, it kinda flips up, five, ten is its fin. That's the fence and the mouth is over by the jack deuce, ten deuce.
Okay, okay. Jack deuce. Mouth.
You guys have been looking at your computer screens for too long.
I don't see my mouth.
You're, you're probably, you're probably right.
They're not finished after it's the grinding, so they're gonna watch it for another eight hour at least.
Nice.
Oh my word.
I need some. Normal, yeah.
You're smoked.
All in.
You can tell the.
Yeah, in, in Silverland he was bluff.
Oh my goodness.
He called it off.
That's insane.
Thanks, bro.
He went crazy on this one. Did he cover us?
As, as, as if he always wins when you get your equity in ahead Danny. As if, he's gonna hit a seven at least.
Yeah, but that's alright. We got it in good.
What?
Call.
Just to set mine.
Four point five. I don't know, fold, it's folder four point five.
Are you serious? This is not full. Like, we are way out of line here.
It's a big blind.
Not that out of line, but it's like.
Effectively, it's the same hand, ace three, ace five.
What's the job is?
Amazing.
Yeah. Oh. Joey. Think he's talking with his new robot. Hello, Joey.
What are you gonna do?
Maybe this is a nice one.
This can be a three bet bluff for a fold.
Yeah.
A little deeper.
What?
The guy at twenty-six, you put maximum pressure on him?
No, no.
He can easily fold.
No, 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 no.
Louis.
Ace eight, ace nine.
No, 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 no.
Not yet.
Ace ten, ace ten, king three.
A little bit of a.
How about a five, three suited though?
I'm down with that.
I don't sign.
You guys are animals. Have a value block.
Triangle up there. Ace deuce, ace three, king three.
Yeah, with the blocker then. You have to.
Surprise, we don't have any jams here.
Why?
If you jam and the big blind has aces, you're gonna.
Bro, you're fifty effective with the big blind.
Yeah, you crazy.
Yeah, you're, 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 you're all the way, all your money.
Big blind can wake up with a hand here too easy.
Exactly.
So bucket jack here, you don't jam?
No.
No.
I don't jam anything, I don't jam anything here.
Yeah, he's king off, bucket jacks, I thought we had one, but no, out of line.
No, alright. Six only.
Six only. It's a bargain.
Yeah, I don't like that. I wanna go seven.
I wanna go all in.
No, just call, God, giving me anxiety.
Not here, not here, the last one.
Connectors wanna call, or the, the unsuited connectors wanna call along.
This guy's gonna snap you off with king five suited or something.
Oh, he will.
And he's gonna take your bounty and he's gonna spam, I'm so good emojis in your face.
Look at this, jack ten off, pure.
I always do the I'm so good emoji, is that?
Not my favorite one, to be honest. I feel like you make yourself a target when you start spamming that.
Oh my goodness, he, no way!
I'm so good emojis right in your face.
Well, how did he call with queen ten?
Yeah, the guy put me this, uh, this emoji, but yet I get my aces with this three and four suited, the backdoor flash, flash door.
Yeah.
We got a jam here.
Louis, you said he called me with queen ten, you know that's literally a Phil Hellmuth quote, right?
Honey, he called me with queen ten.
Honey. Yeah, I like that. What was that? What's wrong?
Uh, maybe jam here, I don't know, I jam this in game.
Twenty-five's gonna jam them all.
JK.
JK, we meant the race six.
Um, you should look to see though, I think it is jamming some.
It should be, but it's like putting too big.
Maybe little smaller pairs.
Yeah, it's just mixing, honestly, like, it's kinda whatever.
Wanna have some pair. Some pairs, like calling range and the jamming range and the raising range.
Mm-hmm, yeah, he just makes it in there. We're gonna win that one.
Are we?
Nope, I'm not.
This is a call.
My God.
Yeah.
And we cover, it's a hundred and fifty dollar booty.
Yeah.
Get us that.
If you, if you're covered though, it's kinda interesting, I bet you would fold. Man, this is, this is the worst. I'm just folding this in game.
Yeah, I agree. Maybe call him, but.
Woo! That was short. Play chippy V, this is almost feels like a jam.
Ah, yeah, under the gun one, dude, he's gonna end your tournament so quick.
Oh, yeah, he's gonna have this.
Well, like, he remembers most of us, so he's just, he has a very wide opening range here, has like a lot of worse suited kings.
That's true.
Damn, you wanted to go all in?
Kind of, I mean, I, I just think with us being pretty short, we're.
Man.
King jack suited, for sure.
Easy.
King ten suited, I don't know.
I'm with you Danny, I, I, I'm a hundred percent with you Danny.
The only thing that's preventing me from.
This guy's keeping like thirty-two, and I'm just like.
I have a ten, we're against early positions.
Okay, so let me ask this, what are you putting in the four range here? What are you clicking this guy in the face with?
We don't care about that.
I kinda, I care a lot about it, I want that in range.
And we're getting an overlay, he's calling us off with like, whatever, you know.
I'm not, I'm not jamming here, by the way, I am gonna just fold this, and I wouldn't be surprised to see a call in, in simulation.
Hundred percent fold.
Folded.
A ten against early position.
And like you said Danny, I think king jack is gonna be a V pepper. Nope, not even.
There's no four.
We could have gave us a tougher spot.
Oh yeah, look at the four, man, the four, the four bet was a complete, uh, it was a complete bait.
Breakfast.
I'm over here wanting to click four and, uh, they're just gonna laugh at me.
I told you, man.
Doesn't make sense. It's like, gives him too good odds to just peel.
Yeah, but you can make your odds because you're, only have ten big blind.
When you make it before the blind, you only have.
And it is ranged as a UTG is too strong for your end, so, that's why you can make a move with this one.
So in general, against early position, ICM, near bubble, having a ten or a jack is bad.
Yeah, be respectful. Um.
Not three bet there?
Nah, it just folds, just.
Yeah.
Honestly, you know, since we're having to raise twelve here, it may pick this combo, cause it wants to be more polar, right?
No, 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 no.
Well, look at, look and see which ones it's doing.
Ace five off or none?
Yeah, ace three, look at ace three, so it's like the not cra- honestly, ace deuce is not crazy here.
Yeah. This is blocking well.
And the king deuces.
Look at how it doesn't wanna defend, but it wants to attack.
Well, I think, yeah, you're, you're making up that EV from folding all of those suited combos.
Remember how a few examples ago, we were defending these offsuit tens?
Yeah, that was first button though.
Yeah. Okay, wanna try the button?
Button versus an open, or button as the opener?
Button as anything.
Okay. Fold. Uh, you cover, it's a V pip.
Okay, and what do you jam here with?
Just always a raise.
I don't think they, uh, raise, uh, jam, uh, until twenty billion on the button.
Uh, you might have some jams here.
Queen jack suited type stuff.
I, I think suited broadways might squeeze something in there.
I think we have to be, uh.
It's.
It's to be a bigger. It's, it's because you're button, button, you have position, uh, it's play well, uh, post flow. I think if we couple like two times the, the rest time, we can jam, then we have a jamming range. If we have, uh, forty-five, fifty bakes and the rest of fifteen or twenty-five, maybe then we can jam.
Yeah, maybe so, Roger.
There goes, Alan found one of his little tree bets here.
Are you gonna put it in his face, Louis, teach him a lesson? Or are you gonna fold?
I'm gonna call, no?
No!
I think it's a fold.
No, it's gonna be raise or fold, you don't ever call here.
What? This is what we're opening. You saying this, we don't defend?
I'm not defending this.
I think you will defend your eggs, but, uh, you're probably kept them.
Wow.
Okay, good call. I'm folding now.
We cover, we're just hoping to make top pair and stack them.
We just sold so much already, guys, come on, we've, we've, we've sold plenty of stuff.
Hey man, if you wanna advocate for that in like Silverland, be my guest, but if you're out there doing that in real life.
This one, I am, we got positioned, this guy's the big blind, he's, he's like this.
Alright, let me ask you a question. Click the seven ra- seven raise.
Oh no.
You got the back window, you got the back window, just open the back one.
Yeah, oh, there it is.
Yeah, so go to the big blind range. Do you think the guys you're playing in real life are finding king three off, queen five off, fragments of all these offsuit sevens and things?
I would say none of that.
Right, so what do you think that does for the EV of a hand that's indifferent and already folding some?
Probably not great, but.
Probably not great, right? I would agree.
What's your defense range against a three bet? Normally a chippy V.
Oh.
All this, right?
On the button, maybe.
In position. Against that blind, we steal.
Queen, queen check off is just such a scam hand, it's like the worst. Red, it's like the redheaded stepchild of like all the, all the Broadway combos.
You defend king jack off.
Yeah, I do, from the button I do.
Okay.
Which, which ends with.
Then you probably just fold.
Um, I think that some of those make reasonable four bets or folds.
I don't know, man, queen jack, you just have two broadway, you're in position, you make a pair, it's gonna go, no, you get twenty bakes. Not many mistakes can come from calling.
It, it's close, man, it's close. I'm just, I'm just putting that out there into the ether, if they're not finding all the, all of it.
I know. I, I'm with you, I understand, but I personally, I'm always calling, so.
Mm-hmm.
Well, well, maybe it's not right, right?
If they're not finding those blocks, is your only jam here in response, ace, king off?
They're not finding bluffs, my only jam.
You get here, what hands are you jamming? What hands are you moving from this jamming range?
To be honest, if you wanna know the truth, I think that they're finding more like ace X oriented bluffs. Like, there's gonna be more ace five off there, more ace six off there than some of this other likes offsuit floor stuff. So I'm gonna take hands like queen jack suited. Which is getting better hands to fold. That's unblocking the bluffs essentially, and the value, but I would be jamming hands like queen jack suited more, queens more, maybe some king jack suited more.
Okay. Yeah. You have a completely different range construction.
Nice, nine, seven.
Look at this jerk. He just won't let you.
Damn, what do we do with queen ten off?
Queen ten off, I am not a fan of.
Old.
Small buying rage gonna be tighter even more than big.
No, it's the other way around. Thing small blind. When he tree bats has more bluffs than the big line.
Yeah, that, that's why, I mean, but he's.
He calls, he's tighter for sure. You, you're right if he calls, but if he tree bets.
Well, you can look at his range construction, he's gonna have more like suited kings and ace X in it, you're not gonna see as much of that offsuit floor stuff, right? So like.
Versus eleven percent.
Yeah, you should be finding more, and it's like, it's just more top heavy.
At GTO, it's always the highest frequency three bets from the small blind.
Mm-hmm. I, 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 I struggle to meet my three bet frequencies the most from the small blind because of that. Uh, I guess you V pip, man, I don't know. Do, okay, so what do you jam here actually?
This?
I honestly, I think this might be a jam, maybe.
We're, we're five from money, what if, what do you think about folding this?
Honestly, Peter, I don't think that's crazy. I don't think it's crazy.
Oh, we just gotta min raise.
Maybe.
Amberful. Twos and threes are crap in IG out, in ICM, just fold your twos and threes.
Yeah, you're right Danny, though, it is, folding is best, jamming is second best, raising is the worst.
What do you do with your fours and your fives?
Jamming, jamming, yeah, so these little pairs do jam a lot, it's just deuces, deuces is the one.
Can, can you check if he has, it does some EV to jam the twos, or it's just minus?
You can see right there on the screen, pocket threes is point zero two, so bucket deuces is going to be slightly negative at jamming being negative point zero two. So like.
Never lose, cause you don't play them.
Yeah, you know, it, it's close though, it's like if they're over folding, whatever, maybe you can jam it, but I, I'm kinda with Pete, like, I want my min cash.
This is also bounty. Oh, gross. Well, you made your bed, you have to lie on it.
Yeah, you have to lie in the muck.
Got him.
Uh.
Fold.
Alright, so what are you messing around with this guy with? What, what are you taking to the streets? What are you gonna three bet him with?
Suit the kings, suit the aces.
What about it? Are you taking any offsuit stuff?
We're, yeah, I would tree bet this.
What are you doing with ace nine off?
Ace eight off, ace seven off, ace nine off.
Hold up, holding all these. Yeah, we're gonna have a bunch of. Actually, eight, ace eight off here, you block them, when you're against late position, having an eight or nine is bad.
Yeah, we're gonna have a bunch of suited sixes, like king six, ace six, that are gonna do this.
What about ace five, ace four off?
No.
But look at this, look at the small blind, he's at, he has like twenty-one, so if you go like si- six point eight, any jams?
You fold with your bluffs, you just fold.
Okay. Nothing here. Oh, he's five.
Ace five, ace nine, ace eight, ace seven.
Yep, king six, queen six.
They're actually pretty high frequency, like higher than I was thinking.
But the wheels, the.
Right, so like on the left side, these offsuit combos, that's like what, sixteen combos compared to the four? Like, it's a lot.
Yeah.
Yep, five and ace blocker.
So this is a reasonably, reasonable three bet, I think it folds there, is what we see here though.
Yeah, there's a minutia of re-betting, but.
Six big blinds, fold. Fold. Get out of there.
Five and hopefully, max tank fold.
Yeah, max tank fold.
You want that yet?
No, man, are you crazy?
Dude, alright, so you should look at the V pip range though, like, I feel like it's gonna be pretty tight.
Oh, you, you have a limping range, oh, no limping.
So king ten is the floor, pocket sixes. Ace eight off, I don't know, man, I might just put ace eight off in the muck in game, I'm not gonna lie, king jack off. Yeah.
You got six big blind, king jack, really?
You got the button though, man.
Queen jack suited, look at this.
I'm out of there with do, you got the button, man.
Jack ten suited.
Yes.
Always in the money.
Okay, I didn't see that actually, I thought we were RFA.
Dude, that guy is like, he's open seven, three suited, and he's just praying you put your chips in.
Hey, for sure.
Like, good luck to you and your flopping kings.
Exactly, he doesn't care. Uh, easy open. Alright, um, too deep to jam, too deep to. Uh, easy open. Alright, um, too deep to jam, too deep to jam. I was curious if we would have any jams here, but I think we're too deep. Uh, raise, yeah, raise. Bow.
Three bet.
Three bet.
Maybe. I, I don't know man, I'm folding though.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Mainly fold.
He's got seventy-three big blinds is my issue, like.
What is he doing? He's cut off at the end of it.
He's inactive though.
Look, yeah.
Cut off, big stack, he's.
Active, he's been active. He gets to be active, just because.
Yeah.
Because you know what he's doing, doesn't mean that you get to play police when you have twenty-five big blinds.
King jack.
Why not?
King jack on the.
Danny's, Danny's got his short middling stack here, trying to play.
Double up, bro, I'm gonna double through him and then we're, we're tied and then we get to bully him back.
No, you're gonna, you're gonna double out and lose, and lose your seventy, thirty and you're gonna post it in the Bad Beats channel and say, dude.
Nah, 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 nah. These are good spots, like if you wanna win, these are good spots.
Tom's gonna call.
I occasionally raise.
Anybody three betting here?
I'm not three betting.
If it's a big tournament for you, like take the min cash, but if, you know, if you're playing the ten bucker, you can take these spots.
Yeah.
Boom shakalaka. Oh my goodness, what?
Boom shakalaka he says.
Easy fold.
If this, if this all.
Exit.
The squeezer.
Cancel.
Okay, they should have.
Six point five.
Yep.
Easiest six point five of my life.
Just cannot go.
No reason to call, right?
Too deep.
So the, the sloping, the aces, when you're starting to, uh, be like a thirty, a big blind and less, twenty, 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 twenty.
Or when there's like rejam stacks, like ten, twelve bigs behind.
Yeah, you, you just don't see it much past like thirty.
And we call here, we cover him by two eggs.
No, the buy, you're gonna get in pro, you're gonna get in trouble in the blinds, I think.
It's too wide for CP.
You sure?
It's too wide, right?
You're playing, uh, twenty-five, uh.
And then can you call like queen five?
You only twenty-six.
Say queen, queen nine.
Queen nine, okay.
Your king, your king blocker is a lot more valuable than your queen blocker.
Very tight here against another game, very, very, very tight.
Well, his range should be pretty tight, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. How about that king deuce though?
Should we try to call?
It's gonna be the same effectively, but.
Yeah. What's up?
Now we'll get three bet.
Yeah, no.
No, don't incentivize us to, to three bet a little more, call a little less, not closing position.
Uh, I would VP it.
Open.
Who's gonna three bet?
Yeah, if button three bets, we just fold.
Yeah. I think peeling queen ten off suit versus three bet is a mistake.
I think this is just a jam. It's, uh, I would jump, it's just a jam.
Jamming be good?
No. Well, you, uh, no, he, he made this three.
Oh, just been raised.
I think, I think at this point, uh, there's maybe two to the ace, uh, jam there.
What about folding here? Is this ever an option?
No, don't think so.
Good.
Your end's too good to, to fold this. I think it's, uh, it's all, it's a show.
It's not gonna be a show for sure. Round the bubble, you wait five minutes, they give you money.
Uh, honestly man, this is the kinda.
It could be a shove.
I, I do limping in this kinda, these kinda spots. I think, uh, min raise folding is gonna be the play here though.
I'm not gonna fold this.
It's close.
Is it?
Point oh one compared to zero.
Look at this, no offsuit, no low wheels jamming.
You could say folding's close too though.
Yeah.
What happened here? Oh my goodness, he did.
He's playing with you man, and you're gonna fold.
You're still gonna make it to the money, no.
Are we broken?
No, no.
No.
Okay.
The next guys.
Solver might.
We get like ace four, it's like.
You, I'm getting, I'm, I'm la- I'm lacing up my cleats right now for you Louis.
If you take the four, you flank it to the side a little bit, it starts to look like a nice, no?
Alright, I, I've put the football on the spike, I've put the football on the spike, you just blow the whistle. Blow the whistle.
Never jam here.
Dude.
No. Do you wanna?
Or never. Like you said, he's messing with us.
Yeah, your bluff range is ace king off.
It's, it's a small blind to you, but I wouldn't be there. I know it's a Brazilian, but you don't have.
Dude, you can't call, what are you doing?
Bro, if, if opening was worth two zero one, what?
You guys are all in the fold mode.
No, I think it's gonna pure jam. I think it's gonna pure jam.
Not with this.
Alright, blow the whistle, I'll kick it for you. There it goes.
Okay, thank God.
Hey, look at that negative, hey, would somebody read that for me? Negative points, what was that? Five, six.
Huge point.
Huh, five, six, so that's.
Never do it.
Yeah, and, uh, as Tim said, your bluff is ace king offsuit.
I mean, it's not even really a bluff, it's like, you know, it's a linear range, but it's still just like, yeah, you, you're only playing good cards.
Four bet bluff here.
No. For your tournament life, against a six, shoot my three bet on the bubble.
Gross, it's the money bubble.
Right.
We don't have.
We got him, we doubled up.
Uh, I'm gonna VPIP this.
Yeah, it's always.
Raise.
Okay, we raise every suit that came?
No.
King five, king four are gonna be cusp-y, but I think I'd still raise those.
You can see this one's not worth much, that tells you something.
Yeah, king three, okay.
You know.
Alright jerk, I fold.
It's the same Brazilian.
What is our win?
Uh, what do you call it?
Four, I'll tell you that.
I think you gotta be kinda tight here man, cause everyone's got twenty, like maybe king. What are you calling with king jack suited?
Yeah.
You think? I'm not, I'm not, I'm not calling king ten. Absolutely not. King jack maybe.
I think king.
Look at your range, do you think you can afford to fold king ten suit? I think it's a mistake to fold king ten suit then.
I'm not calling king ten suited. I'm gonna stick by it.
Okay.
What about, what about pairs?
I feel like you're gonna fold a large portion of the range of this.
I do too. Um, pairs, I feel like sixes are gonna probably be close. King jacks close, sixes are close. What about ace five suited? Fold. I'm thinking like ace. Maybe ace, ace nine or ace ten suited, I agree with Peter.
I think it's a seven.
Ace ten seems like the range.
Ace ten suited ace queen off. Pocket eights.
Hey, look at this now.
It's gonna look a lot like.
Not really man.
Yeah, ace ten suited ace queen and off.
Look at that. You guys are wanting to putt over here with king ten? And I'm like, I, I'm over here like, I don't know about king jack, and it's actually king queen.
This is a red.
Oh, same difference. Same difference. Yeah, so. Yep, so like sevens and sixes are kinda iffy. King jack is iffy. Probably just to fold and like the ten. I was like ace nine, ace ten, ace nine. I'm folding ace ten off. Ace jack off maybe.
I'd be making a mistake in pulling ace jack off here, everything else.
Yeah, reality, I probably do also.
Louis, how, why were you thinking about calling here?
Well, I have king jack in there.
You had king ten in there.
Then also.
Did I have king ten?
You said it was a mistake to fold king ten.
No, king jack. Yeah.
Three met change.
Last spot.
Interesting spot.
It's so tight first as we.
Okay, we're gonna fold. Ace ten off, look at here.
Queen nine?
Queen nine.
Ooh, um, hmm.
Too short, we're gonna fold.
Yeah, are you, are you so sure?
It's a, it's a go.
We could call.
I honestly, I wanna VPIP this. I'm just torn between making it four point five and, uh.
Stop it, you won't get us this time with your min rings.
So, no, I think, I think calling a suited nine could be kinda nice.
The other players.
We wanna play with a big blind.
Dude, you cover everyone. I think you got a VPIP here. I just don't know if you're, uh, raising to four point five or you're calling. It's probably calling, it's too close.
Makes a very good raise to four point five, cause it's just not polar enough, I think, you know?
Yeah, you kinda want more like ace king blocker oriented stuff. Nope, look, it is raising.
Not at all. Yeah. He raised.
So it's just pulling from the suited floor is what you're seeing, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, I still think. If you find your bluffs in king seven and ace four and king jack golf, that's fine. It's just basically where I found my bluffs.
I just know.
discourage the squeeze jammers, right?
Yeah, ace ten off, I found.
I think, yeah, I think a big part of it is you wanna present uncapped ranges.
Yeah.
It's too, like you said, discourage the, uh, squeeze jams, because if you present a capped range here with a hand like queen nine. And a guy squeezes, the, what is it? The hijack? The hijack's going to jam into you more polar, I think. Or not more polar, but like, he's gonna jam wider to. Cause he covers, or no, he doesn't cover. Never mind. Louis, this is a different one, I think. I don't know if he covered or not.
No, we covered him, that's part of why we.
But did he cover, did he cover the big blind is what I was saying. So twenty-three, ten.
Yeah, and they were like.
Our own.
Yeah, so like if the button jams or the big blind jams, hijack covers both of them, so he would be more likely to pursue those bounties. Um, if we present a capped range by calling, since we're covering, is what I was trying to say.
Yeah, and then we probably have to call off and it's like a lot of stuff that is pipping us and dominating us and.
I just call here.
Yeah.
Gets messy.
I think it does too, Tim.
All right.
Just call, why would you, why would you go all in? You're just gonna box.
Not the aces, it's the ace king.
Ace king suited though.
Yeah.
You're gonna make their life easy.
Small blind's gonna call behind, like.
Okay, so if they have, if they have ace queen, ace jack suited or something like that, and you jam.
Hey, listen, you're crazy. It's a bounty.
It is.
It's my money here.
Alright.
What you're saying, like you, you also, you give small blind a chance to, to bluff at us with some, or to try.
Yeah, well, that's kinda, that's kinda what I'm getting at.
No, 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 no. I don't want none of that, I just want my money.
Get your, get your money.
Hmm.
Yeah.
So because the button has fourteen bigs, if he goes all in, it reopens the action.
Yeah.
Right, so we're able to put the small blind all in if he goes in as well, and the big blind's functionally all in if he calls, so.
Well, and, and the raise.
Really worried about the small blind.
Yeah, and the raise is big enough to kinda isolate random calls. It's not like they're calling a big blinds to see a flop and folding.
No.
Yeah, as we're right.
I didn't see it was all in or a call.
It was a call.
It was a call.
Uh, this is a fold.
I think you would make a lot more sense to just jam ace king off, you know, when I.
Uh, we didn't look at it, but I would agree with you Tim.
Yeah, it just kinda makes sense. Yeah.
Dude, he's got ninety-five. Like, I'm not messing with this guy. I'm just, I'm just not gonna mess with him.
There's always a fold.
You're not. Respect for daddy.
Like, I'm just not gonna mess with him.
You're right, see how we're rich, friends.
Six point six percent of hands.
Don't play with the big daddy, you know?
I guess ten would.
So that's, that's something that is really interesting. So the deeper villain gets, the more you can eat this with like. No risk or no like, then.
Alright, so.
The tighter we get, like really.
So jam, jam into him and look at his call range. Calls basically any pairs, king, queen.
Very respectful though.
It's actually pretty respectful. So like, what if we not all in raise him? How wide is he calling? So if you, if you have the balls to do that raise, what is he calling with? He's calling with seven, four, five, three.
Look at his reshare range. He's putting your nose into it.
Yeah, man, this is why you don't mess with this guy right here.
A quarter of the time he puts your nose into it and says no.
And he's doing it with all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, man, like this is. This is dangerous, is what this is. Twenty-four. You raise, obviously.
Ooh.
Uh, you just call.
What about ace ten off?
You just call.
We're bounty hunting, we're gonna be wide.
Honestly, yeah, honestly, I'm calling most aces here. He's only got six bigs, like he's gonna have. Um.
It's, it's four. It's four more chips. What do you guys think?
Call everything.
Hands.
Calling everything.
Alright, alright, well before. Alright, how about this? What are you guys folding that you're opening here?
Nothing.
A bunch of stuff.
Maybe a queen suited, uh, below than, uh, queen eight.
Only have four, you only have to pay four, four bounty, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna call everything.
So you're, you're kind of like relying on like the fallacy of pot odds kinda thing, right? That's the reason we have like a, a raise out of position to four big blinds, because the risk premium makes that mathematical model break down.
That's when there's chips behind Galen. This is just running the hot, cold equity and.
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of agree with some of that. I think you do just call it all. Yeah, it does. Well, okay, so. No, not really.
No folds.
You just don't fold. You're right. I think you're right, Danny. Yeah.
Very surprising, no folding.
There's no, there's no, um, there's no chips behind.
Roger said that.
Yeah, you don't fold it.
Yeah. Anything. Okay.
Yeah, I was thinking about it wrong. Uh, three bet him.
I saw it.
Let's see what he got. Just a call, oh, that's cute.
Hmm, we're covered in too many places. I think you just let it go.
Okay.
Three bet him.
I'm not sure if I wanna three bet on this tag that. He's twenty-three.
He, he covers the big blind, so he should be opening a little bit wider.
Yeah, this is a micro three bet, it's just fine.
Uh, so I think it's.
I'm gonna smooth call sometimes to see if the big line, you know.
It gets back to the presenting the capped range thing. Is it my problem with it? I would micro three this.
If you jam, you can fold.
But it calls some, it's fine. Okay, raise.
You have to go.
Do you four bet?
No.
Do you four bet any small pairs? I think some, so wide versus wide, I know like in chippy V arrangements, you do turn some of these small pairs into bluffs. Now, I don't know how like the ICM implications affect that.
I think you're, you're gonna call for more, uh. With the ICM.
A test little.
So what are, what are the worst ones doing? They may even be more froggy. So fours, okay, like. Yeah, it's, it's a little bit less. Now, I'm just gonna look at a chippy V one real quick. So like. Cut off first, big blind three bet at fifty, not really doing it. We're not fifty effective, or we are fifty effective. It's a good forty. Oh, wait. Yeah, so it's doing it more. In, uh, chippy V. In uh chippy V.
With the babies?
With the babies.
Bottom up or uh?
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't like to do it with the middle ones, like sevens, eights, nines, it calls those, but the worst ones, it's mixing frequencies, call. I mean, folds, what are we doing?
Okay.
If we were like cutoff button, maybe, if it was cutoff button, maybe, I I I just think, I'm drawing the line here with the seven.
Which ends do we bluff?
What about, yeah.
Shoot the bounce, okay.
Gotta run, have a nice day, y'all, you too. Raise. Raise. Raise call button and small blind.
You called this big?
I think if they jam, you call. You call that for sure.
Question is, what do you fold? It's not what do you call, how much do you fold here?
Yeah, you will have some folds now.
Well, first, let's see if we call the button.
Like.
We effectively call the button.
Ace say it off.
Right, and then?
I'm kind of curious how you proceed versus a big blind three bet, which is a little more uh, a little more risky business.
I should have tied the range together. We have to bet also.
Just calls, yeah. Look at the fours, threes and deuces, though. Call.
When deuce?
And fish in someone else. Bad ace.
I'm calling here.
They call, ooh, easy go.
Yeah. Thank you.
Raise?
You could raise a little bit.
Late against under the gun, this is the one that's gonna want to raise.
My problem with raising it is, like, what do you do versus a four bet? You're just kind of effectively torching your equity.
Well, it's easy, you fold.
Exactly, you're torching your equity.
Against a four bet clicker, you might call.
He only had twenty-six bigs, it's gonna be alright.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, raise.
But you're torching your equity on his four bets is mitigated by the times that he folds after his two bets.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Plus, you're probably drawing pretty thin if he uh. Four bets.
What do you do here with queen jack off?
I'm curious what like the four bed jamming range looks like here, I don't know how much of a clicky range we have at twenty.
Ace ten off, queen jack off, king queen off.
Yeah, but the bottom three bet on this is is.
Honestly, like, I think a ace ten off doesn't make a good three bet here, or four bet.
What do you do with it? You should call or four bet?
I would call, and like, the, okay, so. The way it was kind of explained to me was like, these middling aces, they're behind his value raises. So you're losing when you four bet, and they're ahead of like his polar raises, which is like ace five, ace six, ace four. If he's getting out of line, which you kind of want to go post flop with, because if you hit an ace, you're gonna get streets out of him, so like. It's. It's getting like the worst of both worlds by four bet jamming. The click is interesting.
Nine, and he goes all in, do we fold anything?
And we fold.
I mean, yikes.
Do we fold the ace ten? He goes all.
I've bet pot twenty deep.
We do fold.
Yeah.
Nice. That's a fun one.
Raise.
Ah, go, can we go in here?
Uh, honestly, that's not crazy, Roger.
It's not the craziest thing.
Well, I don't know.
Nice. The Vince special.
Not crazy at all.
Once you get past the guy with fifteen, you're pretty happy.
Yeah, you you really don't care too much at that point.
And he's pretty boxed up, I mean. Yeah, what's he, what's he supposed to call up with?
Should be pretty tight.
Yeah.
I would think.
Alright, I think we're gonna wrap it up.
Alright, man.
Thanks a lot for the session, everybody.